I hereby call the meeting, special meeting of the Santa Barbara County Board of Education to order, and we're going to start with the pledge of allegiance, Mr. Porter.
One more time, let's salute our community, and we're going to do it again on Thursday.
Yes.
So please join me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And we are fortunate today again to have Hugo with us as our Spanish interpreter. Let me try this, see if I, let me know if I've improved, Benny. Se proporcionar interpretación al español para la reunión de la junta directiva. You're on.
Good morning, my name is Luiso Santos, I'm here to provide interpretations in Spanish, so any one of you who wants to listen to this event in Spanish, please, we know and I can provide you with a headset for you to be able to listen to all of this, interpretations in Spanish. So para cualquier de ustedes que quisiere escuchar esta interpretación en español, por favor, no olvide hacerlo saber, creo que pasaré uno de los equipos que están disponibles aquí, así lo desee. Gracias.
Gracias.
Thank you.
And roll call.
Okay, Mrs. Carty?
Here.
Mrs. Dany?
Here.
Mrs. DeWeir?
Here.
Mrs. Cross?
Here.
Mr. Howell?
Here.
Mr. Porter?
Present.
I'm not aware of any changes to the agenda. I will mention that I'm not anticipating a break today, so if you want to get up and have water and coffee, feel free. It's a little bit more informal than normal, but I'm not going to officially have a break. I have no comments today. I was just disappointed that the Artemis didn't get off this morning, but better that they wait and get the fuel leak fixed, so that's...
An engine fix.
Yes. Any other comments from the board member heard today? If not, you can wait till Thursday. Okay, and Anna, any public comment today?
No.
No public. Okay, and we have Austin with us today. Then we will go to our action item. Have I forgotten anything? It seems to be. Deliberate and select finalists for provisional appointment to the board for trustee area number two. And I kind, I, in my mind, kind of went through a strategy for how we would address this, and I'd like to just jump right in, and since Maggie's the head of the board organizational committee, start with her and go around the room, and have each of us just list our first and second, and then we'll see where we are, and then figure out what, how we want to approach it. So, Ms. Dany, if you would share with us your conclusions.
My first was a standout, Nadra Erman, and for a number of reasons. I think because, A, she has a lot of knowledge for the foster children program, she has a daughter who's in our system, in the public school system. I liked her collaborative approach with both heart and mind, that's kind of my approach. And I believe she would bring diversity to the board, which this board needs, so that's my first. My second I struggled with, because Dr. Niehaus was one, and the other, even though he's young, he's very knowledgeable, he probably wouldn't run when it was time for the renewal because of being graduate school, but Alex Spees would be my, you know, between, it was between Dr. Niehaus and Alex Spees, so those...
Niles.
Niles.
The last one.
Yeah, I'm sorry, Spees, I don't know where that came from. But those were my deliberations.
Okay, and Mary Beth?
Almost embarrassingly alike. My standout, number one candidate was Nadra Erman. I too really liked the idea that she had a parent, that she was the parent of a high school student, and her demonstrable community engagement focus was really impressive. Her work with at-risk foster youth and families in housing, she has an eye for organizational strategy, she's keen on implementation. I like the fact that she was in this intersection of having had nonprofit experience and business acumen, and then there's some creative arts in there. The fact that she was a Catherine Harvey Fellow really spoke to me, because as I mentioned, I'm a big advocate of that program. And then the environmental stewardship piece I thought was an important strand to weave in. And then the social entrepreneurship piece. So I thought altogether, she was the most well-balanced candidate, and I felt her perspective, again, would be really fresh and needed. Dr. Niehaus was my second, although I have to say that I was so impressed with Alex Niles, I think he's on a path to something really great. I was a little deterred by the fact that he's a student and he probably would only stick around for a couple of years, if that, but I was very impressed with his answers. I thought he gave a full-throated endorsement of the county ed, he understood. And then Dr. Niehaus, obviously his strengths are in his background in data analysis and financial impacts. He would be great at getting into the weeds of our very extensive and involved budget. I think his research background is helpful. I wasn't as inclined to place him at first, because I thought Nadra had a different intention. I felt that Dr. Niehaus had a definite heart for kids, but his interest was in, was more didactic. Obviously loved history, there's, I thought he was a strong candidate.
And Mr. Howell?
Unless I didn't speak with either of the women talking, I think they somehow read my notes. So I will, I embraced everything the two of them said, and many of my comments are the same, and I, so I endorsed their comments. Of the many things I have listed, a couple of things that I were not said by either Ms. Dany or Ms. Carty. One thing that, so my candidates are, my choices are, number one, Nadia Erman. I really appreciated her attitude, energy. She also, I felt, was very self-aware, which is just, to me, a very refreshing attribute in anyone. She got a little emotional, she kind of reined herself in on talking too much, but she was very genuine, very self-aware. The perspective, the K-12, parent of a K-12 student, which is already been stated, is really compelling to me, it is. I could be wrong, but I don't think any of us have K-12 kids, maybe grandkids, probably grandkids. So, I could go on, but I, she is my strong first candidate. Alex Niles, I really appreciate the comments. He was very impressive when someone's 22-year, 22-years-old, I think he said, in discussing their, or presenting their wealth of experience, and he's very serious, and it's very, I think he has more experience than most 22-year-olds. So I thought he did an excellent job. Bob Niehaus, I think, brings a different perspective and different talents, I think. I would list Dr. Niehaus as my second choice, but we only have two, so that's it.
Very good. And Ms. DeWeir? DeWeir. DeWeir.
My first choice is Dr. Niehaus, and my reasons for that is I think that he can really come to this board and hit the ground running. I think his experience with the, with policy budgets and financial reports, from working with the, this public agency, the Housing Authority, and he had served for five years, and he, after five years, I think his last year, he said he was president. So it sounds like he's a very, he's very collaborative, and he works with a lot of different agencies, so I think he's very knowledgeable, and I think he walks the walk in terms of, he's volunteered at Franklin School, and so he's very engaged with all people in the process, he just doesn't just talk about it. And I like the ideas that you were, you were encouraged about his leveraging of volunteers and with partners in education, sounds like that would be a great fit. And I think he really did his homework. I think he really, in the questions that we had about our role as an appellate board, I know that there were two items that, on the application, about reviewing, you know, this video and also our website, and it had, it went into detail about how we are an appellate body for inter-district transfers, charter schools, and expulsions, and I think he, I liked his answer about democracy and common objectives and keeping an open mind. He also, I love the fact that he said he will rely on staff and superintendent for all the information, and then, and then make, come to a decision, but it's all, you know, you have to rely on the facts. And I thought the detail of the answer was, was very specific, and I thought he did his homework, and he was prepared for his interview. And that's probably, the Housing Authority, I think, was a, was a biggie for me, that's, you know, and that's all has to do with low-income housing. My second choice, and it was a really hard choice, but I feel that Tyree Bird didn't get really, because he was our first, and that has always happened in other searches, always the first doesn't, doesn't get the kind of whole body of the, of the whole process, because we're new, or we're all nervous about the interview process, and it's, and so it, and I went back to my notes, because I said, I'm going to look at him again, because I wrote down, this is the way I operate, I write a lot, everything that, all the words, I try to get them all down. And I, I think he really studied the role of our office, I mean, he really was specific. And he's a fourth-year student, and I think he'll bring a unique perspective to the board because his mom was a high school sis, a teacher, and he had a younger brother with a learning disability, so he went, his family went through the special ed process, and he also realized that his family was the major support system. I think it sounded like the public school didn't, didn't serve his, his brother. Also, he emphasized the democratic process, that, you know, and, and working together and understanding the concerns, balancing it with the concerns of the voters as well as elected officials. And I think he had a clear understanding of our role as an appellate body, and he said he supports local school boards and their autonomy, and I thought that was a great answer, and their decisions to review the facts and ensure all parties and rights are respected. I thought that was just a, I mean, I mean, he was, his answers were brief, but I thought from, from my notes, I forgot that he said all those things until I went back last night, and I was looking at him, and I said, wow, so he kind of rose to the top for me, after a lot of consideration. Thank you.
And Mr. Porter?
As we get further around the table, there's fewer talking points. So my, my first choice is actually Alex Niles. Very well-spoken. I think he seemed to do more homework than anybody else as he prepared for this. He knew a lot of the details that an ordinary observer wouldn't necessarily know. He, very accomplished for a 22-year-old, but, but talk about giving a different face of diversity to this board. I mean, I have the grayest hair, but, but I'm joined by some others around this table. And he brings, I don't know if he's Gen Z, or, I forget what all the generations you call. He's not my generation, but I think he, you know, he's a recent product of the public school system, and he obviously has some very, very important memories and experiences that I think would, would inform this board. I actually like that he would not, probably, maybe he will, he would probably not be around for next time, because the bad thing about appointments is you kind of give somebody a leg up when the next vote goes to the people. You know, this would be a chance to select somebody, and probably the people would have a fresh choice on who they were going to select after that. And that's not an attribute of Alex, but it is of the circumstance, and I kind of like that. I could say, and Isla Vista is a very underrepresented community at all levels of government, and what few representatives they have tend to be extremists. For example, the Santa Barbara Community College Board, but I don't take Alex as being that way, he didn't appear to be extreme in any way. For many of the same reasons, I like Tyree. A lot of the same attributes, a little quieter, more soft-spoken, but I don't take that as a negative at all. Clearly succinct in his answers, and I kind of like that among a seven, a seven-member board. And then if I could have, I'm going to have three instead of two, but Bob Niehaus also, I thought, for all the reasons that everybody else talked about, I think he was a, he was a good number two. But the bottom line is, I would be proud to serve with any of the five. There are no bad choices, so that's the good news.
It was hard. It was hard to go through them and figure out, you know, who I would want on the board to represent me if I was voting. And I gave my first choice to Nadra, and for all the things that were already said about her. I liked your comment, Bruce, about in two years, the voters will decide because they'll have to run again, and that's true of any of them. So I, I like that that is there in two years, you know, to have the person run again and be endorsed by the voters or not. Second choice slash, second and a half choice, I had a real difficult time between Alex and Bob. I really, really did. And I'm going to share with you now why I had such a problem there, and I think this is time, maybe we can ask Dr. Salsedo for some more information. When Bob was talking, he talked about the fact that he had lived downtown in Santa Barbara and had moved to Hope Ranch. Well, in two years, Hope Ranch will be in the same district as Mr. Howell, so he would not be able to run for reelection in Area Two. And while we don't know what the voters will decide in two years in Area Two, no matter who we put in, that would guarantee that in two years, that seat's going to change again. And I got thinking about that, and that would mean that for Tyree and Alex, presumptive on my part, that the voters would endorse either one of them in two years when they run again, they would be committing to stay here for six years, or we would have another vacancy on the board. And at their age, and with Alex, especially with his potential, I, wow, I don't know if, I think he, in six, in five years, in four years, he could be bigger than what we, not we, the county board, but we, Santa Barbara, he could be beyond that, which I think would be great, would be really wonderful. So I had a real difficult time with that, and, and since I have made that comment about Bob, and, and that hadn't come up, I was wondering, would we, I, I think Dr. Salsedo actually did check on each of our candidates' viability in two years. Would you want her to share that with us, now that I've said what I said about Dr. Niehaus? I've made the playing field not very level, and I don't know if you want to get the low down on the rest of them or not.
I'm interested.
I am too.
Oh, great. Okay, okay. Well, we, when we were checking for qualifications for the trustee area right now, we were also looking at 2022, and recognized that there were two individuals, at the time, there were seven applicants, so two individuals were qualified for this term and a provisional appointment, but not for 2022. Bob Niehaus is one, and then one of the two city college employees was also in that same vote, so those were the only two.
Oh, and that, they both dropped out, so of the ones we have up there, Mr. Dr. Niehaus is the only one that would definitely, we wouldn't have anybody running as a reelection candidate in two years.
Dr. Salsedo, excuse me, is he aware of that?
You know, I did not, we did not communicate that with him. The board was saying, made comments in a previous meeting that really it shouldn't be a factor here, so I didn't want it to make it a factor for, for him, but would, you know, if we have a future conversation.
And it wouldn't, I would have thought about it for the students because of the six years, just because we know they're students and they're graduating and what comes next, but I wouldn't have thought about it for the other ones, except he volunteered that bit of information and that's, so it kind of, for me, blew the cover on the rest of them, and I was, thought to level the playing, playing field, and I, I would like to know. So anyhow, I, I ended up with Nadra and Alex.
If I could speak, I'm, I'm not the elephant in the room, but I am the trustee from Area Two, and therefore affected. I think it's a non, I would consider it a non-issue personally, that I'm more personally affected. I know when we were doing the redistricting, I think we had a really good conversation here, Dr. Rick Duco was on the board. I was very aware, the two of us in the same trustee area had no idea that he was resigned, and I certainly don't know what's going to happen in 2024, but it seemed to be, I really appreciated the fact that we had an open discussion. One of the things that I hadn't thought about was that somebody's point, if we move, I think, my trustee area two a bit to the east, every one of the, every one of the trustee areas would cover high school, that seemed to make sense. But I guess I'm saying, I don't think it's a consideration, I think we have a diversity of opinion, maybe we have a consensus, but it's, it's not a consideration. Thank you for that, Jim.
I have a comment?
Oh, please, Ms. DeWeir.
I think that we are talking about appointing a position for the now, and it's going to be for the next two years. Anything can happen in two years. We could, we could move, we could have a divorce, it could be a new job, ever, I think that the fact that that even came up, I don't, I didn't know any of this, this is a surprise. And I'm kind of disappointed that this is even, even part of our discussion, because we're not planning for the future, we're planning for the now and the next two years. And I think it's pretty unfair, personally, that we are going to eliminate someone because a student, and we don't, we don't know, we don't, we don't, we can't see the future. We all might not get elected, I might not get reelected in 2022, I might not be here, so why would we disqualify someone from being here for the next two years? I just thought, I think that's pretty, I'm pretty, I'm, I'm not happy about that, that this is even part of a...
I'm not talking about disqualifying.
Well, you're not disqualifying, but you are basically saying you didn't choose a person because this person might be an incumbent and run against Joe, I didn't even think about that, and so I was like, wow, this is all just, just coming to the surface, and maybe he hasn't even thought, and all those districts were very, you know, were, were all, were put up on the website, and it's very, it was very public, so he could go look, I never bother, I don't know where he lives, I don't even know him, but I just think that it's unfortunate that that was, that was, that shouldn't even be a factor.
And it wouldn't have had he not said it. I didn't go looking for it.
I know, but, but it doesn't, it doesn't, it shouldn't even matter.
And I, I'm disappointed, Ms. DeWeir, that, that you're not honoring or respecting my feelings, my thoughts, my outcomes on this, or whatever reason. I didn't say that that was the primary reason, I didn't say it was the only reason, I didn't say I disqualified him, I still listed him as one of the top three that, that I really liked, but personally, for me, that did weigh into the decision. I respect that for you it would not, and I would hope that you would respect that for me, maybe it did.
I think the term "disqualifies" is really unfortunate, and that was never stated, so I don't, I don't want you to attribute that. Well, everyone can speak for themselves, but I, I appreciate everybody being open. I learned a lot, and had some surprises from what each of you said in terms of attributes of certain candidates that have really made me reconsider, but I think we, from my perspective, everyone was very open in sharing their comments, and no one said, well, of course I didn't consider X, Y, or Z. That just wasn't stated.
Well, I apologize if I used disqualified, but I just think that maybe the softer word would be influenced your decision.
Well, I'm sorry that you don't respect my judgment.
I didn't say that I didn't respect your judgment.
Well, you're discounting it, and, and I, I, that's, we're both disappointed, and we'll go on from here. As I said, I respect your opinion, and I don't discount it. It's a very valid point, and it's one that we actually had as a board before this ever came up. We said we didn't want to know, so I, I appreciate that, and I respect that as an opinion of the board previously. And from there on, the thing was for each one of us to pick our candidates, and we have. And so where, would you like to ask any more questions of each other about their choices or their thoughts about the candidates?
I'd just like to underscore that, in our own individual judgment, I didn't hear anyone say, I would have chosen this person had they been eligible to run in '24. I didn't hear that, and I don't think it was here. And I think when it was a qualifying piece of the puzzle, it might have been factored in, but I don't think it influenced anybody. So I think characterizing that as being kind of a game changer might not be entirely fair. And also, we're reading the same applications, and we are listening to and observing, actively listening and observing our interviewees, and then we're coming to different conclusions, and that's what we're here to discuss. So I would just like to make sure that it is a collegial discussion, and we may disagree, it sounds like, you know, we have some disagreement, but I know that we have what it takes to go through it. We are so, so blessed that we had incredibly qualified candidates, I was thrilled, because I was afraid that a provisional appointment might turn people off. Do I go through all this trouble, there's a chance I might not only do it for two years? These candidates were undeterred, and further, they were qualified. Now, why I might disagree with you about Tyree, I think it was the opposite of Bob that you said would hit the ground running, I think Tyree wouldn't, because I think that there was a lot more, a lot more preparation that might need, need to happen, but the intent was clear, the will, the desire and the spirit of volunteering for this position was clearly there. So again, pleased with every candidate, agree with you, Mr. Porter, that any one of them would be an honor to serve with, but I'm, I'm really interested in the next part of this discussion, how we weigh our options from here.
Any other comments?
I just want to add one thing, I think I can disagree, but I don't think it's disrespecting you if you disagree, I just wanted to say that, this had nothing, it was not personal, but it was part, a factor, and I just wanted to express that, and I'm sorry if it came out that I was disrespecting you, because I think I was just, it was a disagreement, I was disagreeing with your opinion and not you.
I took it that you were disagreeing with my opinion.
But that's what we can do.
Absolutely, absolutely. That's what we want, that's what we want to share with each other, so that we can look at this from... look at this from many angles, many different directions, and then make the right choice for the board.
So I'll, one bright spot, for those who ran in 2020, I challenged anyone to be able to figure out the precise boundaries of their trustee area when three neighbors across the street said, I have your sign, but you're not on my ballot, what's wrong? They literally live across the street from you. And I, I tried hard to figure it out, and I clearly couldn't. The good news is, each of us and everyone who runs now with Google technology and the work that redistricting commission everybody else did, we will know. So that is a kind of a Pollyanna-ish approach, but it really is helpful, both for these candidates. The one thing I'll say that was a big surprise to me is, this person runs in old Area Six versus, so we all get that. I, I'm prepared to make a motion. I don't want to cut off discussion, but I think.
We can still discuss.
I would, I would move that we appoint Nadra Herrmann as the successor trustee or the trustee for area, trustee Area Two. I'm six, she's two.
I would second that motion.
I think we need to modify it into kind of straw poll because of the way we're agendized for today. It's just deliberating, and the provisional appointment will be made on Thursday officially.
Understood, understood.
Just to tweak it a little bit.
Consider my motion so tweaked.
Further discussion.
Yeah, I just want to put another plug in for Alex Nehaus. I think rarely will this board ever get a chance to have this kind of individual coming from that community with that much insight and willing to push so much work into this. And I think he'd be able to give us insights that nobody else, except for maybe Tyree, would be able to give us on what's going on in that part of our county. And I just think we may never have this opportunity again with that qualified individual.
It's true.
He certainly was in everybody's radar in the deliberation process. There's no question.
So Austin, does one have a, on a straw poll? We are tentatively, we are checking the presumed votes for Thursday.
Yeah, I just, in reading it, it says the provisional appointment will be made at the regular board meeting. So I don't know how we've got it drafted right now, but it seems to me that the actual vote on the appointment would need to be on Thursday.
Could this be a vote on the selected finalists?
Yeah, because it says, and we'll select the finalist, or S, for the provisional appointment by the board on, the appointment will be made, but it, to me, the motion does say that we'll select them today.
Yeah.
So how about I nominate Nadra Herrmann as our finalist to be voted upon at our next meeting on Thursday?
So how does that, I'm sorry, Joe, how does that impact us notifying finalists?
Right. So what, what we outlined in our calendar, the board's calendar, was to determine after the deliberation today, the individual whom the board would select, so that we can, I could connect with her and invite, or him, them, to the meeting on Thursday. And so that was, that was the purpose of having this meeting ahead of that meeting on Thursday, rather than inviting all five, for example, on Thursday, and then making the vote determination there. So it would be appropriate to have the finalists selected today, so that we could then connect with them and invite them to Thursday's board meeting.
The action item says select finalist, or it has S, correct?
And it may be, correct, and it may be somebody that is your, if the first person that is your finalist says, you know, after thinking about it, I realize that I'm moving, you know, I can't make it, then it may be that the board would like to have a second person, a second choice, so that we could contact them in the event that the first person declines.
So would the motion then include the plural?
That's really up to the board, I think, but really, I think, starting with the first and then moving to the second, maybe makes sense.
So we need a second motion for a second finalist, both would be present, and then we would have.
I, well, I'll make sure to connect with, Mrs. Frost asked everyone to be, all the five to be available. And so, you know, if the first person accepts, then I think we're done.
Okay.
That would be, yeah.
I, the whole process, both Friday and today, is, it's public, and it's, I think we've done a good job, but I'll certainly say, in an interview context, I've never done anything like this. And often, there's a more robust discussion about candidates. I respect everybody's opinion, but speaking for myself is, it's kind of odd. That said, I think we come up with a finalist today. We don't come up with a, with a number two, because I think that raises all sorts of additional issues that are frankly not necessary. I think we have a finalist. We vote here, that person, as we told each candidate, Dr. Salsido said at the inclusion, you'll be notified, all of them want to hear today something. And I suggest that she inform them who our selected finalist is. We plan to vote on Friday. Anything can happen. If it does, we have to deal with it, but I, I'm inclined not to spend the time coming up with a number two, because I think it, it's unnecessary, hopefully will be unnecessary, and it's a different dynamic.
Mr. Howell, I understand what you're saying, but I also feel that we've been a prepared board, anticipating maybe 20 candidates, and we do, you know, how would we do the interview present? I think we need to anticipate, I, I believe that our number one, one that you brought forward, will probably accept, but in the interest of being prepared for an unforeseen event in her life, that we should have a number two.
We, could we, we don't have time to schedule a special meeting between now and Thursday, do we?
Yeah.
We do.
Yeah.
So to me, that's the answer, is, I totally respect what you're saying, and it's, but if, if you make the contact today.
I will, yeah.
If we do that, then we have a back. We don't want to go in Thursday.
Wow, this is different. The small risk is if she backs out on Wednesday, Tuesday or Wednesday, then there's not enough time, unless she does it Friday, Tuesday.
I'll find out today.
Well, we have until.
Please, no more meetings.
Well, obviously, enchanted, in a, in a, yes, to notify them today.
Or we technically have until, what, the fourth, fourth, fifth? Trying to remember the exact day.
It's later in the weekend, I think it's on Monday, they really hold it, it's the date.
That's a really good point.
So we really have to appoint by Friday, I think.
So the special meeting could actually be, we have lots of options. Special meeting could be.
On the fourth, fifth, if we needed to not make the appointment on Thursday, it could be made, you know, on Labor Day or something like that.
If, if in fact this devolves, and we are forced to choose a second, could we call a special meeting after the board meeting on Thursday? Could that be the time that we huddle?
That's another option.
Okay. And then further, with respect to Thursday's meeting, if everything were to go as planned with this motion carries, would there be anything that would prevent us from a unanimous vote on Thursday? I'm just wondering if we need any further discussion on reservations. I think to present a united front would be an important component of this process. I know it would be more comfortable for the candidate and the public to know that we are united in our decision, and I'm just querying, should, do we need any further discussion on any reservations as expressed, either Mr. Porter or Mr. Porter? In anticipation of Thursday?
I'm not sure what you're asking.
I'm asking, do we need any further discussion about this candidate? In the interest of hopefully possibly having a unanimous vote.
On Thursday?
On Thursday.
And how would be the goodness of a unanimous vote versus one from our hearts?
Well, I guess that would be the point. If there is something else that needs to be said, is there anything else we could, we could vet today while we're here? Rather than Thursday, have a vote that's reflective of not the full support of the board for this appointment. And it's just a question, a process question, I guess. Maybe I should.
I think it's, no, I think it's a valid question. Mrs. Cardy, I, I think it would certainly put the selected candidate at ease that we are a united front, so we welcome that person collectively. However, from the heart, I understand their perception as well, so I would hope we would have that discussion here rather than Thursday.
Thoughts? I mean, I, I have reservations, and I don't, I don't want to go to the, say anything negative about anybody, and so I want to stay on the positive side in why I prefer my candidate. And, and something that came up earlier about, about Dr. Nehaus and his moving, and I don't know geography of Santa Barbara, I'm sorry, ever lived there? I don't know Hoot branch, I don't know Santa Barbara, I don't know the difference. To me, it's all Santa Barbara. So I, I feel like, I feel like it's unfair. I think, and I, that's my, my gut is that it's unfair.
What is unfair?
What is unfair is that we're looking, we should look at a candidate in the now and not think about whether a student is, might not be here in two years, or that a candidate is going to be out of his district. I like, that's why I like Dr. Nehaus, is that he can hit the ground running. He's, he's very qualified, he knows budgets, he knows, he's retired, so he also has the time to dedicate to this, and he came prepared. He knew, he reviewed the questions, he answered the questions directly. I'm sorry, I made the mistake of interrupting him, because I didn't eat any food that morning, and I lost my train of thought. So I needed, I brought my eggs, but I just, but I want, but I just feel like it processed and was, was unfairly blurred by, by bringing up where, where a candidate lives. I guess, I'm sorry, and that just makes, that just, that's how I feel.
I guess I don't under, excuse me, Miss Denny. I, I guess what I'm having an issue with is that here, you bring that up again. Everyone had already voiced their first and second before I even said that. So clearly, it was something that I caught that no one else either caught or cared about, so it didn't influence anything, and it, except it was a factor in my decision, but I'm only one. So I, I disagree with the concept that it's unfair that that is being brought up now, because I don't see, based on what's occurred here, that it's an issue.
I would just like to inject that this is a collaborative effort. We, it's been indicated that we have a candidate that is favored by four of this sixth board group, and to negate the democratic process that we've gone through by clinging to a candidate that clearly is probably not going to be considered at this point, for no other reason than the fact that he was not number one. He was your number one, but he was not number one collaboratively.
He was a top two.
Agreed, but we're looking at one.
Are we ready for a vote? A straw vote? A preliminary vote? A vote?
Well, you can, you can select the finalists.
Okay.
I'm being overly technical, probably.
Okay. All those in favor of selecting as a finalist Nadra Herrmann for the provisional appointment to the Board of Trustees for Area Two, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Upstream. Okay.
Did Dr. Salsido, you'll, I'm sure, communicate maybe after.
Absolutely, I'd like to know immediately. We had a very deep discussion about having a second, just in case, and the way I heard it come down, and we can do a vote, to make sure that I got it right, was that we would rather let Dr. Salsido talk to Nadra this afternoon, and if for some reason she doesn't accept, Dr. Salsido will let us know, and after the board meeting on Thursday, we will have a special board meeting to decide on a second. Is that a represent, fair representation of where we're going with that?
As long as Austin says that works.
Yes, that works.
Okay, that's in compliance, and we can make.
Okay.
I'm really worried about this process. Again, because it's, it's public, the interviews are public, Mr. Porter had a very eloquent sentence to say to some other candidate who maybe was in the room, you could stay, but you don't want to stay, but you said it, but that didn't happen. I also wondered about the vote in the straw. I, I was really concerned that it could be messy, and I think it, I applaud Dr. Salsido or President, and so it worked very well, and I think everyone was respected as a candidate. The Zoom said to somebody that Ms. Osgood and Mr. Byrd were the Mary Beth and Joe of the prior meeting, remember when we got, we were frozen, we couldn't talk. That's the reality of it. But I think, I applaud everybody, I think the process worked, and I was worried.
And it was not without its glitches, so thank you, thank you, Anna, for staying abreast of all this and always delivering communication so clearly. Anna, thanks for handling all this with finesse. It's really important to me that we always, always, beyond collegiality and collegiality, are trusted messengers for our entire county, and that we conduct ourselves with the utmost integrity, and I think that we've accomplished that.
We have Matt in the corner who.
Oh, he does. May Friday happen for two of our candidates.
Okay. For a massive clarifying question.
Of course.
So, Mrs. Ross, you had mentioned special, potential special board meetings as an if and only if after the board meeting. Are you, when you say that, are you saying after the board meeting on Thursday?
Yes.
A special board meeting on Thursday?
Yes.
Making sure, okay. All right, thank you.
If needed.
Correct.
Which we hopefully will know tomorrow at the latest.
Today.
Today, at the latest.
Yes.
Okay, if not today. All right. I want to thank you all for going through this interesting journey together, and I appreciate everybody's comments, I truly do. I think it's very important that we as a board feel comfortable voicing our opinions. I think it's very important that we as a board feel comfortable voicing our opinions and talking to each other as individuals on a personal level rather than be stilted or, you know, not comfortable doing that. I think it's just really important that we can say what we're thinking and what's on our mind, keep things in the open and be transparent about them instead of waiting till another time to voice our opinion or, or strike out or whatever. So I appreciate that. Thank you all very much.
So we will swear in our finalists on Thursday?
Correct.
Is that a question about our agenda?
Yes.
So that's going to go out today and have the straw poll. Outcome in the, in the, no, so that, so I thought the whole point of not having the, receiving the agenda is we were going to select somebody today.
Right.
So we could send out for everybody because they're certainly.
With their name in it.
With their name in it.
So that's something.
It will have her name in it for the board to appoint her on Thursday and, and then administer the vote. Yes, so it will, yeah.
I have an agenda.
It'll be in the agenda, correct.
So who swears, who will swear her in assuming that she's the one? So not the president?
No, superintendent.
Yeah.
Dr. Salsido, I know that we've been in the very cognizant of posting an agenda. And if we do have a special board meeting, do we need to do a posting in the event that that may happen?
Yes, it'll be a 24 hour. It will need to be posted 24 hours ahead of that special meeting.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Okay.
What a learning process.
It really has. And, and you know, with the continuity that we have had on this board, it hasn't gone through this process with any of us before. And it may not again. So we need good notes for the next people that need to make a provisional appointment so that we help smooth the path for them. Okay? I'm looking for a motion to adjourn or do we still have more that we would like to say?
Still move. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay. See you all Thursday.